... We're making no give of all three selectmen. And we're going to be doing the meeting minutes off of the recording and the video. I want to thank, uh, Lee Wirtel for doing the video recording and, uh, Linda Nickerson for putting it online for us. Um, gentlemen, we've got some, we have no more business because our meeting minutes aren't complete from last week. Is that correct?
I'm, um...
So, I've got to, uh, move on and do public comment to start if anybody's got anything that they want to say quickly at the beginning of the meeting. All right, that was an easy one. We'll move on from there. First thing we're going to get on the way is we're going to do an appointment to the chair of the board of selectmen. And I would like to report out of this denomination, I have nominated the chairman of the, uh, somewhere. Second discussion. Do we really have to do this?
See, you're the only one discussing it yourself.
Do we need to vote on it?
Keep talking, keep quiet.
All right. That being said, I'll, uh, close the motion, I guess. And I'm going to thank those of the selectmen for support. And, uh, I've learned a lot over the three years being one of the selectmen here as, uh, glad to be chair of the board to, uh, bring some different, uh, aspects. But I want to thank Mike because he's been coming now, I think, 40 years in the room. And Bob has put a huge amount of work into this select board, uh, behind the scenes and reading everything and getting us up to date and keeping us all on point. Okay. I want to bring him up.
I said hi.
All right, moving right along, we're going to try and keep this meeting going tonight. George Holt is on, uh, first agenda item. George is on, uh, in reference to some snowmobile use, uh, in one of our new developments in town, uh, overlooking states of on conservation land. So, we're here to discuss that, you know, so we'll take a look at that and, uh, see where the town wants to go with that.
So, uh, we were planning to put a trail out, uh, once we had the property on the northern district. Um, which is that pink, the pink trail. Uh, it turns out that there's a lot of wildlife there and we're not, we're going to discontinue that. We're not putting that in.
Okay.
Um, but as while we're doing that walk, um, we noticed with Red Arrow days, um, a homeowner of the last, um, house on that, um, cul-de-sac there, he drives his snow machine across our conservation property.
Oh, straight across?
Straight across.
Okay.
To connect with the neighboring property, we see some trails on the adjacent property. Um, so before we go ahead and talk to the homeowner about Xander, going across conservation land, we don't necessarily allow that. And it sets a bad example to other people who's in town. Um, we thought a workaround would be that he's at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a right-of-way to that property. It's a town right-of-way though, but before we said, why don't you just go across the right-of-way to get to that property, um, we wanted to check with you guys to see if that's something that you would be in favor of.
I kind of like the fact that there is a, there is a right-of-way there, so there's an alternate route for him to go to, and it looks like it's directly from his, from his door yard, that particular house, so.
And it, it works out in this instance.
George, do you know, is that, uh, just a local snowmobile trail or is that a, that he's going to or are you not sure?
I don't know. I mean, it's not a state system trail.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with being consistent, other than you do know that they've already made a change once before through the legislative body at town meeting when they allowed for the trail to go from Gorham Pond through Concan with down forest over to Everdam Road over to the state park, you know, which isn't being used now because, you know, the people have gotten older in Florida and whatnot. Um, but I mean, but that still exists. So, maybe we can kind of somehow have a warrant article and rescind that and have consistency with all of the...
I was never worried that that was actually a real trail.
Oh, yeah, in fact, it's moving.
Yeah, I, I think I had heard of it before too, but it might have been before that. Can I open that down in the section?
It hasn't been used for a few years, but it's nothing to say that if somebody else and they had and wants to go across, you know, they could use it, so. Cause I, I like the idea of consistency in here.
That was passed by the legislative body?
Yep.
And then my rule of thumb is next year to close that.
Can I speak on this? That access was required by part of the planning board?
Right.
That you allow access to further develop of another property, which means...
That property owner wanted to develop that property.
You would upgrade this to class five.
Right.
So, how would you, you're giving the owner or authorities to use what's not a class five right now, but it could in the future be class five and then to give them rights to use the roadway, is that allowed in the future? You see what I'm saying? It's, it's...
It's a more, it's instead of saying, hey, go there.
Yep.
We want it, that's why we're here.
Now, the town owns that portion, that's part of the road system.
Right. And, and there was also a problem at this property or in subdivision last year in the room. I really just wonder when somebody was driving their snow machine around the, the firepond there on, in the town property.
Yeah, I think that was along the bowl line over here, where they were coming in through this, okay, right?
Down here, I think further down the road.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there's another little sliver of town land, yep.
George, uh, I know down a couple of blocks we have a lot of snowmobile trails around that area and there's a lot of use on conservation land down there. I think, um, as far as I go, I'd like to have the conservation commission meet with them and see if he doesn't mind maybe using that alternative area so that you can avoid a conflict with them and explain it to them one-on-one, because we do have all the areas that they do snowmobile on and...
There's a steel trail that goes through to the pond, the conservation area.
Right. And there are some local trails there around too that they're using. And I know that as part of that agreement on that property down there, I think that use was kind of set aside to continue that, snowmobile use of that property.
The velvet work?
No, for the Kimball Pond area, we're in the state of property.
That was written into the...
That was written, yeah.
So, like Bob said, there's some, some use that was prior years down here, there's some here.
But, yeah, each conservation property is not the same.
Right.
So, like Kimball Pond allows the snow machine trailer, Concan does not allow snow machines in there.
Doesn't allow any, any motorized vehicle. That's, and that's why we would like to see something consistent, you know? I know when we got the land for Kimball's Pond, that was a big item and a lot of snowmobiles use the area. They were, they were reluctant to lose it, so that was adopted, you know?
I think, uh, you know, not knowing exactly where that trail goes, quarter eleven goes up through the main power line here that connects and, uh, it probably heads down there in some, some sort or other and connects to, I would imagine, so they can travel further. So, um...
I like what you recommended, um, they one-on-one for us, keep it very low-key.
Yeah. If you try that, that notice...
Yeah, that's what we were going to do, but I just wanted to check before we said, use that.
No, and I appreciate you bringing it to us and, you know, Matt's right in his front yard to use that trail and it's close to that one house, so he probably didn't expect anybody to walk around that property and see that happening, so. I appreciate you.
Okay, so we will contact the owner sometime before next season.
Yeah.
And chat with him and then we will report back to you where our...
Yeah, if there's any conflict, you're in any trouble, or if he doesn't want to go that way, then I guess just come back, we'll set that up. Okay? Does anybody from the public have anything to say on this subject?
I do. Get some work for those people that you're talking about. It's pretty reasonable. I, I think they probably just get the A to B, you know, and screenshot, you know, across the back of the property. And if you explain the situation to them, I would think they'll be pretty understanding. And that was set aside by the planning board because that's a landlocked piece of land, so they don't have access to the town unless that gentleman that owns that land wants to access it for some reason.
So, that's a different parcel, it's a little bit further.
Yes.
They owns both of them.
Yeah.
He owns a land, land-only piece and then his house is on the other end.
Tony Colletier, this guy's name.
It's on the other end, just going their way.
This piece right here is landlocked.
Yeah. But this one here is owned by Colletier and then his house is on the other block.
Anyway, well, as you know, when the planning board, yeah, so, yeah, it is a town right-of-way. It's not being used as a roadway and it doesn't affect us in the town and it, from the highway point of view. And like I said, I think if you just tell them the story, it'll be, you know, okay.
No, I appreciate you keeping us in the...
Anyways, and all of a sudden to find out, well, we should have listened to that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, George. Thanks for the nice math. Next thing on the agenda is the COVID-19 virus in the town business operation. And I don't think I see, uh, Tom and Tommy Sullivan in that group. Is there anybody in the bathroom?
Nobody, come on in.
Okay, so I guess we will start right on that, uh, COVID-19. What we want to do here tonight is set up a general guideline, um, more for all the departments. We're going to take them each individually and look at them, uh, but we want to have some sort of, um, some sort of guideline set up so that all the departments are working together. And we're going to talk about each one individually. Lynn, did you do that for the different departments? Do you have that?
Oh, I have it just here on my notes.
Which department do you have notes?
Um, town office, the teleport building department, the administrative office and...
Okay, Linda contacted me earlier this week wanting to review her hours and/or whether we keep it open. So, I think we'll start with the Tyler Clerk's office, because I see Linda in the group and we'll go from there. Um, I've gone back and forth a little bit with the other selectmen, as we call to notify each other. We talked about having an emergency meeting, because this meeting was originally canceled and we decided to reopen this standard meeting and we'll cancel next week's meeting. And we're going to go every other week alternating meetings and try and keep a, a lower impact if we can to the crowds. Um, so I think, Linda, do you want to give us a little bit of a briefing on what you have started for your guidelines and we'll discuss them and then follow the strategy on this building as, as a, as a whole?
At six p.m.?
Yep.
It's kind of hard to put stuff together because everything changes and this is happening so fast. But I did come up to the few things, and this is, um, subject to change, and I just washed my hands, based on the ever-evolving conditions that we have. I have a few others here if anybody's interested in putting there. So, when I've come up here so far to, um, keep things running as smoothly as possible, right now through technology, residents have the ability to regis, do their renewals or the registrations online, they can give dog licenses online, they can do vital records online. This can also be done through the mail. So, um, I am going to have residents do those transactions in this way. Motor vehicle has, uh, through one of the governor's executive orders, granted registrants with 20-day plates issued on or after February 6th, have an automatic extension through April 30th. Now, normally somebody with 20-day plates would have to come into the office and it has to be a face-to-face, it can't be online. So, this extension eliminates that need. Um, so it, I won't need to face time with them. Uh, the extension at this time does not apply to late renewals. So, if your registration expired in February and you're just now getting around to it, you still have to do it online or through the mail. Um, I can't make exceptions for that, especially now with motorcycle season coming around and everybody's going to want to bring their bikes out. So, people are just going to have to, they're going to have to handle this.
Can I still do the drop box we were talking about?
Uh, we can certainly use the drop box, um, outside the office.
Yep.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Um, anything that can't be done online, uh, will be done by appointment. This will eliminate, I can't say I'll be open from 1:00 to 3:00 for people who need to do face time, because the whole idea of this is to, is to keep people separate right now. We just need that social segregation.
So, you're going to go to a full by appointment?
I will go by appointment and it's going to be on a per-case basis.
Okay. And your hours are going to be open to talk with the public?
Yep. If you read a little further, uh, marriage licenses have to be done in person. I can't do them online. That's by statute. I have a tentative appointment set up on Monday for a marriage license. Um, so for, I've made provisions for the, um, face-to-face transactions, um, through the suggestion of Dan Sklute and a few others. I've installed a sneeze guard at my window, which will be helpful. And I do sanitize every time I see somebody using anything, a pen, a calendar, whatever, I wipe it off when they leave and that's to protect me and them. Um, so I'm going to be in the office from Monday through Thursday and that will be to provide support. I'm going to encourage people to use email rather than phone because my phone didn't ring a lot today and you can only do one at a time and it's, um, it did clog up the works a bit. Um, I'll monitor the e-reg every day, which I do normally. That's one of the first things I do when I come in in the morning and now I will continue to monitor it through the day, uh, as well as, um, email. I always do that. You probably have noticed that I might have emailed you 11 o'clock at night on a Saturday because I check my email remotely. I will continue to do that even more so, because I know there's a bunch of a lot of people with a lot of questions on how do I receive. So, that is my plan. Going to change in hours, it's going to require me to go to the bank every day. Motor vehicle will require that. Um, I, right now I'm granted the schedule I have because of the hours and the hours at the bank. So, my plan every day is after I leave here, I will go make a bank deposit. Um, I, Pam Noliot is going to order some more of the night deposit bags. We have that ability, so, uh, we don't have to go into the bank because I believe they're all starting to go to drive-up or, or night deposit door. So, we've got that at risk. Um, and at the same time, since the post office is right there, I'll be able to nail everything I've processed that day. So, things will move quickly, uh, as quickly as registrants get them to me, the turnaround time will be very fast. Do you have any questions?
I do, essentially you're going to be closed to the public except by appointment.
Except by appointment, it's a great...
Okay, so, approved and planned.
Thank you. And Lynn, I'm not going to post this online, I'm going to cover something specific for online. Is this just a big one I've wanted to leave you?
And just so the elder knows, this has kind of evolved over the last couple of days. Linda called a few days back, selectmen have quickly discussed it over the phone, come up with our own ideas and as we've spoken back and forth to schedule this meeting, we've kind of evolved this where we were going to have the counter open, now we've got more of an appointment type of, of setup because there's no way to really keep people out. I was in the office today reading all through this COVID-19 stuff and we had three different people come into the town offices looking for Linda's office, but she had the border down so she could, you know, try to talk with people through a cellophane window. And, uh, I could see that was not going to work without having an appointment scheduled, so we'll have the proper notices on the doors so that people can call in, or if they come here, they can immediately call her, uh, right from there. So, I think we're set with your department, I will give the final decision at the end of this meeting, but thank you for your time.
I'm trying to cover everything and this has just all evolved so quickly and actually looking at what other towns are doing, we're late. Other towns have already closed up shop and pulled into sidewalks.
Well, you can vote, you have any questions?
I agree with the comment by other towns, we are a little bit late. My concern is that, uh, we have to really be aggressive here because we have elderly population in town and that's the population really at a high risk. We're, I think we're going to keep the, uh, keep it minimal, minimal people traffic in here.
True. I would also like to suggest that when we put something on the website, because it's pretty obvious now that the whole school thing was shut down and that takes up so much space, you might want to replace it with, yeah, basically what we have now. Oh, and in the meantime, I did put just a small thing on the hot topics on the website just to, to touch base with, um, residents, so let them know candidly what was going on.
That's what I heard earlier, that was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Lynn's department next.
Okay, um, obviously we're going to try to work so that we're all doing the same thing. I have checked with the other departments within this building and we're all, um, I guess my biggest concern and the question that came from other conferences, will the doors be locked? And from what we're reading with other towns, in order to limit the traffic like you saw today, uh, closing just the counters or the doors internally, allowing people to come in, would only direct the traffic to a different department that someone else would have to handle before they get the answers that they need from the other departments. So, um, if we're all on the same page, they've provided, uh, tools that will help people, um, or guide people as to how to go through the process depending on the department they're working with. So, I personally think that we should lock the doors. I think all of our employees have pass codes to get in, uh, that would be authorized to come in the building. And with that information and the phone numbers listed on that, if it's that individual that comes in that requires that face time because they have a certain situation, either pressing or scheduling the form, then they can contact, they can, uh, call that department, get them directly on the phone and then we can let them in as, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, what Lynn's referring to is, I've had to draft a quick notice, um, with a larger font so people can read it hopefully without glasses. We're still fine-tuning the hours on the bottom. It basically says the town offices will be closed to walk-in business until further notice due to COVID-19. Office staff will be available onsite to handle your transaction by telephone or by other means such as emails or postal mailings. If you require direct face-time assistance, please call to schedule appointment. They've got the town clerk's office number and her extension, building department office number and extension, assessing and administrative and also the tax collector. Uh, we're probably also going to add the transfer station on this notice as well. And I was wondering if we could refer to the chief and see if he had anything else he thought we might want to add to this. Anything you've heard that you want to...
I think you got it covered.
I think we got it covered, okay.
Do you have the town email address on there?
We have different emails, I mean, the rest of them.
No, the administrator email address, she, they could contact her and she could direct them.
You know, underneath each of these departments, we could put the correct email address.
There were some of those towns, some of the recent examples that listed the department with an email.
Okay, before I bring it back to the board, I'll open it up for public comment to these, um, hours and, and thoughts. Chief?
You know, there are still people in town that don't have a computer, mostly elderly people. So, you're going to have people showing up here, like, or just in the car, that didn't know that they had to make an appointment.
We had that today.
Right. And, uh, just to be cognizant that there are people in this town that don't have computers at all times of the week, but...
And that's why we are going to do, you know, by appointment to limit the people coming into the building. We are still going to allow those people to come into the building as they schedule a program with the appropriate departments. So, they will be able to come out and read this and either call from a cell phone or go back home and call. And I'm sure, you know, somebody knocked on the door, all the department people will still be in the building, so it's going to be much fun, so.
Yeah.
And now, we've, we have that exact case happen today where we had elderly person come in, you know, I'm sure they, they don't have the...
There are a lot of people, there are a lot of elderly people and they don't...
My only concern on that note is that I, I'm here after hours a lot and we lock the doors when the last person leaves. A lot of people will grab that handle and pull it and it's like, boom! And so, I'm just not sure how, and I guess I'll have to play it by ear as we see from one day to the next, if locking the doors is wise or if we put that notice on internal doors so that they can at least come in and not...
No, I'd like to.
With some preference to, if you need immediate assistance, you can knock it.
Yeah.
Knock on the door.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I can add that.
You don't have a doorbell, so...
Yeah. I was going to suggest the knocking as well.
Yeah.
Um, and that is preferable to moving the doors unlocked.
Yeah, I know.
Because it does tie up, it ties up other departments.
Only, only because we're going to be doing these many minutes, could you guys just say your names and you start talking?
Oh, yes. Linda Landry.
What we've done with our buildings, we still lock people at the minute, put a notice on the door, just big letters, say wait, and then it asks a couple of questions. Have you, are you sick? Um, you know, have you been exposed to anybody who's, who has been diagnosed with a coronavirus or taken care of somebody who's diagnosed with a coronavirus? Have you been asked to be quarantined? And, um, that stops people at the door. It says if you have, return to your car and call the number. I put the fonts, like 145 fonts, you can read from a parking lot. Just go off, sound the horn and a police officer will come out beside you. So, we've given them that option, they sound the horn, then we'll come out. So, we don't want to turn anybody away, um, you know, and maybe they'll call, so we've done...
I don't want to, and start too much about turning anybody away, but once you let people in the building, they're going up and down this hall and then it...
No, I understand, but ask that they shouldn't come through the door.
Right.
You know, they check the car, beat the horn, and we come out to them and deal with them outside in the open air with this...
I mean, some of this is going to be inconvenient to people and we have to understand it's a small town, we try and help as many people as we can, but some of this is inconvenient for public safety. You have to be inconvenient at times, so I think that, you know, we'll take every step we can to try and make sure that we don't, um, impose on people's rights here in town.
Linda Landry? Also, you just made me think of another suggestion, that some of the things that we, we lean and the building department will be taking in will be by appointment. And it would be of us to, to ask those questions that Dan asked before the people came in. Because if they have been sick, it defeats the whole purpose of everything that we're doing right now.
That is part of our agenda.
In an emergency situation, we can do, as Dan said, go out to the car or do something in the open air or chance of exposure as less.
Yeah. You know, additionally, we may want to post your office hours here, because I know you work later in your office hours at that time, so that the office is only open at that time.
Yep.
You know, and then you know, just trying to disregard...
Mike, do you have any comment?
No, I think we're, comments are all good.
Yeah. Um, yeah, my thought is we should lock the outer door only because I was here today and the people come in and it's, um, as soon as somebody has their window closed, they go to set the next one down and the next one, and so they end up blocking a longer building. So, I'm thinking that if we lock the door...
Exterior.
Exterior door and have this enlarged font so they can contact the appropriate people to make the appointments and see if the stuff can be done online. Linda, did you have something further?
Well, I was just going to comment that even when, uh, even when we're not going through a crisis like this, that is the norm here because we all have different sets of hours. Like Monday and Tuesday morning means close, so people will come to me if I hear or you get them look for the tax collector at odd hours. So, um, but locking the door will certainly eliminate that.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, so I think everybody's in consensus that we're heading in the right direction with this building and, um, we'll implement these things, uh, I guess, starting tomorrow. Some of them are already in place, but we'll...
I'll get it on the website.
How do I get it, get it noticed on the website? We'll go from there. Um, one thing I want to address, Linda brought up, is, um, as these departments get calls in to set up face-to-face appointments, um, in this COVID-19 package, I won't go through it all because, as the chief alluded to us last week, we're getting, you know, 10, 10, 12, 13 emails a day on the different subjects. And, um, to go through everything on here would keep everyone here much longer than they want to be here. But there is a list of questions when you do a face-to-face appointment that you read down through and ask the people, pointed questions. It's not something we need to put on the door, I don't think, because, um, when you're setting up that face-to-face appointment, it's a time to ask them all these questions and if you go down through and they haven't hit any of those, then you can schedule a appointment. If they have hit some, we're going to ask them to wait and delay the appointment, I would think.
And make a suggestion on that. So, the people aren't offended, I mean, I've noticed that even going to a doctor's appointment or something, when this COVID first started, they were asking those questions. That maybe, so the people aren't offended, we could preface it with, the town has set up a protocol... the town has set up a protocol that we have to abide by, and I'm sorry, but I have to ask you these questions. So that it doesn't look like we're, we're being personal.
You could say they need it.
I could do that.
I'm gonna get back.
It's good for another three years, so we say that.
First time and I'm gonna... Okay, I think we'll move on to a different department now, I think this one's pretty well set. Unless anybody else has any more comments? Okay.
Next one, transfer station?
Yeah, let's head to the transfer station. Come on up, Woody. Yeah, I'll do it, I'm not sure. The transfer station's been brought up, we have a lot of traffic through there, a lot of handling of materials. And there's been some thoughts going around, and I'll read you some of that. We also have ones from other towns that we've all read and gone through.
I also contacted like three or four other towns.
And, and part of our thoughts at Ben's so far is having our regular hopper open and putting all trash. Over at least the next two weeks, we're gonna stop the recycling and the handing over the counter. And we'll revisit that at our next select meeting and see if we're gonna extend that further, and we'll just take it day by day. For now, we'll stop the recycling and either people, I noticed one town asked people to either hold their recyclables and/or put them in the hopper if they wanna get rid of them. And we'll, what we plan on doing is try and have two employees down there, not helping take any of their trash out of their vehicles anymore, but overseeing it. In case the hopper gets jammed, if you need to change one out. And the reason we want two employees is just for safety reasons.
Right, right.
And so now we need to talk about some of the hours of employees, what we're gonna do for them, and whether some are gonna sign up for unemployment, or how we're gonna work that. But that'll be part of the process as we go along.
That was, no, that was my concern too. I wanna make sure that, you know, it's, it's always tough getting the part-time employees, and I don't wanna short them hours.
Right, and some of them have that concern right now.
Right, and I, I, I'm concerned that, is there other stuff that you can get them on projects doing in there?
There's some stuff, I mean, there's some things to do, but there's not enough, especially with the weather we're in right now.
Okay.
To keep them busy for long periods of time.
One thing I wanted to read, one thing I wanted to read, this is from Rollins, I think it's, if it works, it works, and things like that. I'm gonna read, "Transfer station protocol. The transfer station will remain open. However, we ask that for safety of employees and one another, that you do not stop the talk with neighbors or employees. Keep moving. Unfortunately, during this time, we, the employees have been directed not to assist people with their waste." Exactly what Dave said.
Right.
And so we apologize for this, but we feel it's in everyone's best interest. That verbiage is very applicable to us. And so I'd say we use it, we're perfectly similar.
Now, before we go into the employee end of it, would keep your hours of operation the same as they happen, I would think.
I would think so.
And we'll just limit that use like we're talking about. What I'd like to do is make it kind of two parts first, because the employees is more our end to worry about, not so much the public. So I'd like to go through that end of it and see if anybody in the public has anything to add to those hours and/or uses of the transfer station.
I hope you're not planning on having that, whatever you call it, swamp wall or whatever that is.
Oh, see, some of the, actually, we can give you some information now, I'm gonna, most of the towns I talked to, actual ones I talked to, that was the first thing they know, swamp jobs down there, they close it right off the bat. I don't have a problem with that, close it right off there. But some towns have gone from the extreme to not doing anything, to just running business the way it is. However, they don't operate like they do. They're doing a lot of it with machines. The residents are dumping the things in the bins there, moving it to available with machines, not hand sorting like they do. One town has gone, any of this, I'm gonna have to figure out what you wanna do, 'cause there's still an interaction. I hate places, there's still an interaction. One town I talked to has shut everything down. The only thing you do in their transfer station for, till April 4th, I believe it is, is you can bring, they have mandatory recycling, they lifted their mandatory recycling. They've given the residents the option to hang out in the recycling or throw it away.
Yeah, that's just what I thought.
And trash only, nothing else. No electronics, no brush, no anything, no steel or demo, nothing. Nothing you charge for, nothing, because you have that interaction. I don't know if we need to go to that extreme, but I think we need to come up with a plan of how we wanna handle this.
Well, I think for the first couple of weeks, I think trash only is wise. You know, people have items, electronics, and they can't hold them for a couple of weeks, and, you know.
Right.
We do have to limit that. If we're gonna, if we're gonna break this curve like the government is asking us to do, we do have to limit, you know, taking things back from them, whether it's computers or refrigerators and handling all those types of things. You know, by closing down the recycling, if we left that open, there would be no, no difference there in life, so the purpose would be. So I think the trash only and/or recyclables, if they can't hold them at their house, was what I was looking at.
One thing I would like to throw is, I'd like to see, because of the weather, you know, we're kind of in the mix, and people are home, we should at least allow them to bring in brush, 'cause we don't have to touch it.
I don't see a problem with the brush.
They're leafing yard waste, we don't have to touch it, we push it out with a machine, and we burn it. So not the leafing yard waste, but the brush. So I, I don't really see an issue with that.
So the trash, the brush, and then limited recyclables and/or capable?
You know, if they're gonna, and just so that you're aware of, I mean, there is a financial side to this.
You're gonna do more hauls?
Well, it'll be more hauls, it'll be, like right now, we're doing fifteen and twenty tons a week. That could jump as high as twenty-two, twenty-five tons.
Do you think you'll be able to handle hauls on your own?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, here's the thing, the other side of the coin is, you can predict what the machines do. So worst-case scenario, you bring another guy in to be there, so there's two people. And then, you know, on a Saturday, you're really gonna need three guys in there. And the reason I'm saying is, you're gonna have somebody at lunch, you're gonna have somebody at break. And, you know, it'd be kind of nice just to have another hand.
We don't have any problem with utilizing the employees. We're more concerned with the ones that we're not gonna utilize taking care of.
Right, no, no, but I just wanna throw that out, 'cause we're not, we're running a skeleton crew, but we're not running beds and a bunch of...
What about expanding hours a little bit? Because we wanna space people out. Let's say we open Fridays, Friday, Friday. And that way, we can, you have the employees, you don't, they don't lose their hours. And you can, I mean, you don't have to be at sixty hours, but the thing is, you can get a crew in there for Fridays, expand it out. You can do, you're lessening interactions, because there's fewer people going in during the entire week. I'd say consider opening more hours.
That's a possibility.
I just gotta try and figure out the trucking.
With that, they're gonna want us to stay open those hours after.
Right.
I think we just better stick with your standard hours, because I can see if we open Friday, they're gonna say, well, why don't you stay open Fridays all the time now? Our budget only.
Right, I, I agree, but the thing is, this, this is a tough time, and the thing is, what we wanna do is, and Saturday's the most busiest day. You don't wanna see a line of ten people there, a lot of people hanging around there. You wanna get people in and out of there as fast as you can. If you can take some of the steam off it from taking a Friday, I think it might be, and that way you'll shortchange the employees' hours.
Because the other side of the coin, the people are still working. They utilize that Saturday, you see, you're gonna have, you have people at home anyways. I don't know if they feel gained that much of...
I'm gonna tell you that we're gonna gain the difference, and I really hate to say this, but it'd be Sunday. Can I be a part?
Personally, I'm, I don't wanna be this.
No, I, I can't get rid of the trash on stuff, but if you had, if you had, if you had your employees working, you wanna stay at home, or you wanna come in and have them get some wages?
Right.
They'd come in.
Right. So I'm just saying, Saturday is an old, Sunday is all turn of the day to school.
Saturday, agreed.
Do you have to just be aware that I can't, I have to be able to have a box? Because, see, I can only get into the trash place until noon time on Saturday. So your window from eight to four is not a lot, I mean, I would have an empty one on site, so it might be all right. We could try it. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, that's a day that...
I'd like to say, let's see how it goes with your standard hours before we make adjustments.
That is the alternative.
If we expand them, people are gonna want them expanded. I can see that coming. Let's try it, if we get into a bottleneck, we'll make decisions as we go.
But just, like I said, also be aware that, you know, this, and we all know there's a snowball effect to it.
Yeah.
What we're gonna lose revenue-wise, what we're gonna pay out, is, you know, it could be considerable. If this goes for ten weeks, you're, you're not talking five hundred dollars, you're talking five thousand dollars. It did pay it out extra trash-wise, you know, there's those kind of things, what's that?
There goes your maintenance budget.
There you go. Yeah, there goes your budget.
Anybody else in the public? Yeah, we got a few, go ahead, chief.
I'm looking, I'm not for keeping the burn pile going, because if not, people are gonna keep it at home, and they're gonna request permits. And one thing the state wants us to do is try to avoid handing out permits to a person. We've created an online system, sometimes I've already helped in giving out permits to a person, or allow them to come to the station, sometimes a lot of people come to the station. State forces encourage us not to go to people's houses to stay in the house, so.
Right.
Not bringing brush to the transfer, potential, what happens if we needed, and we have issues with people hurting anyways, where it's nice if they get down there and...
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, we don't, we don't have to help them without taking just off load.
Yeah, go take a quick look, see if they have anything oversight.
Like I said, we push it in with a machine.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that. Leo?
Yeah, we more tell, the other thing I'm thinking is, you're talking about electronics and appliances and everything. But if you have that closed down too long, you're gonna find them on the side of the road, you're gonna end up having to deal with the police with that, and Jeff's gonna have to go pick things up, you know? So you gotta be careful how you do that.
I think for the short haul, we're gonna do that, and if it expands much beyond that, Leo, we'll have to think of some other ways to handle those products, whether we get more rubber gloves, industrial gloves, or something to work on those items.
Is there a way you can have them there, responsible for offloading?
Yeah, I don't know, some of the stuff you guys do a tremendous amount of work with.
Maybe they're still gonna have the, I mean, if I'm getting the gist of what's going on, with all the departments are trying to keep our distance.
Right.
You know, I would say, you know, to, do it for a couple of weeks, and you're gonna be able to manage like we're doing by then.
Yeah.
Or if you have to have governors, you know, whatever. And then come up with a plan, or in the meantime, work on coming up with a plan, what's gonna, you know, what's gonna work beyond this. You know, you could take there's the stuff now, but you're gonna have that interaction where you handle with their money and... I mean, we're all gonna handle money at some point, but if we can drop the risk a little bit, at least for a couple of weeks, and then, you know, go forward with it. Come up with a plan in those couple of weeks and see what we can do.
You know, this has already evolved so much in the last couple of weeks, I think we need to try it for a couple of weeks and see how it goes, and then maybe do some more. Jeff, you had a comment?
Yeah, Jeff Crosby. I was just kinda, the demo thing, I think you're gonna have a lot of unhappy customers if all of a sudden you just shut the switch off on that. They're gonna load their vehicles up, the truck, they're expecting to dump it. And then they'll be pretty aggravated. I'm thinking, even if you don't wanna collect the money, it wouldn't be the end of the world if you didn't charge them. And also saying, I mean, it wouldn't be the end of the world, it would...
Yeah, I think some...
You know, and maybe, then maybe put a sign up.
Sometimes they actually waive the fees on certain things.
That's what I mean.
We could get in there.
Yeah, but...
You could do like Jeff's saying.
Yeah, put a sign up ahead of time saying, as of maybe next Saturday or the Saturday after, we're not gonna be temporarily not accepting demo. Just 'cause I can just see people showing up there with their truck loading, 'cause you can't get the word out fast enough, you know?
So defer demo.
And, and again, if some people got a little more time on their hands because they may be laid off or their work is slow, they're gonna do some projects around the house to maybe keep them busy or whatever. And like I said, this is gonna be the end of the world if we don't collect every dollar.
Stuff is unloaded on their own typically.
Yeah, you don't...
The only interaction we have is the exchange of funds, which we could talk about waiving.
I like the idea of that.
I mean, it's still gonna supply services for the town, I mean, at some level.
Again, you, you have to pick it up off the side of the road.
Yeah, I mean, not everybody would do that, but some people would.
Have we written down these deals with it?
I'm here, but I would like to meet with Woody, at six feet apart, just to make sure that they follow. They do the phone, the phone office, and say, and ask the questions at my office, so I wanna make sure anyone that's answering the phone with questions about his department, that they know exactly what it is that we're allowing and what we're not.
So right now, I can see the good ideas with how we've got the trash.
Trash only, no recycling, brush is okay.
I don't see a problem with demo.
And demo too. That's gonna be, we'll add the demo to it, that's what I wanna write that down.
Demo's okay?
Yeah. Scrap metal should be given, 'cause we don't, unless it's something big.
Any of those containers that are set up by...
Self-service container.
So I think we've already come up with a list of sub-handling for these items, and then no, not receiving these items, and maybe a yes and a no type of list.
Yeah, I think your electronics and your, your recyclables are the tough part, 'cause they gotta handle it. And you know, you never know, and a guy doesn't have his gloves on and grabs stuff without thinking, you know? You don't wanna put hands in situations.
Do we wanna try waiving the fees or no?
I mean, I would do like, like Jeff's saying, I mean, that makes sense, you're never gonna get the word out quick enough. Never gonna get it out quick enough. And even, you know, for, for this Saturday, you're not gonna get it out quick enough to stop the recycling.
Say we'll waive the fees for the next two weeks is what my thought is.
I'm thinking the same.
We'll reassess it in two weeks on those items, demo items.
Just one other suggestion I have, not that they're showing up anyways, the commercial hauler. I'm not gonna check his load. He hasn't been in in four weeks anyways.
Okay.
But I think temporarily, we should, he's taking it to his shop as of, is what he's been doing. But I think we should stop that for temporarily, for a couple of weeks, 'cause I'm not gonna check his load.
You're just the one?
Just the one.
So why don't we make a note that you called him and...
Oh, I called him up, like I said, he hasn't been in, and it's been just about a month now anyways. Breaking, stopping, but I don't, not that he's dishonest, or anyone's dishonest, but the potential's there to bring stuff from another town in here. You know, we're, we're not charging for this, and we're not doing that. You see a snowball effects, if we just kind of have a little handle on it, just for a couple of weeks and we can get some of this edged out a little bit more.
I guess, that's reasonable, and if he does need to come in, I guess we'll kind of leave that up to you to set up by appointment, I wouldn't make.
Yeah, we can work on that. So like I said, he hasn't been, he hasn't been in in like a long time. Anybody else, chief?
Yeah, as far as your electronics go, the virus has a certain period of time that'll, that'll live on its surface, and then it dies out. I don't know if the transfer station has the, the, the space to do this, but if they have people offloading and just let it sit there for a week, the virus should be gone within a week, and then it could be safely handled by people with gloves and stuff. You'd still be able to get that stuff in, you wouldn't be picking it up off the side of the road, and it would, it would be safe to play handle it for a week.
The problem is, chief, I think that these guys help people offload, take refrigerators, autotrans, this and that stuff. So then initial handling's still gonna be there, so...
You know, some of the electronics and smaller stuff, that they can, they, they can have the, the people handle themselves, you know, offload themselves, just like sit for a week. There's interaction with money transaction too with those items too. And so I think is, I'd, I'd say we can address that maybe two weeks, and if it, and then, but different, we wanna slow things down to a snail's pace right now.
Yeah. And I think if we don't slow it down, we just literally keep coming with everything, we're not gonna do that. The, the other thing is, we, we might not have the appropriate space to store everything, 'cause you guys, as stuff comes, you're disassembling it and moving it on.
Fortunately, right now, we're in a good spot space-wise.
Sure.
I shipped the load out a couple of weeks ago, we do have room in there, but it doesn't take long to fill that room back up. But we do have some space in there.
But I'm talking about a room, or an area really, where you're leaving it outside and not touching it.
And it would, it would be in the building, and it would, you know, that's...
You're going in the building with all that space.
Um, so, so I'm clear, as of right now, we're shutting off the recycling part of it, okay? So we'll put a sign up Saturday morning, lock those lanes like we've done in the past, and direct their ability down.
I mean, that's a consensus I think the board has, right?
Yeah.
So I think the things we've implemented tonight, and keep your hours standard for now the same hours you had. And we'll check with everybody here at the meeting.
So as far as a sign, I would just put waiving fees for the next two weeks, I would just let...
Right, I think what we should do, people come in.
Just to know what the time... Put a sign up, we might get more construction.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if I'm hearing right, what we're not gonna accept for the next two weeks are large appliances. You're allowing the small electronics being able, but no electronics at all. So we'll have to come up with a sign that says for the next two weeks are the dates.
Yeah.
We won't be accepting those items. And then you have, that sounds like a good setup, yeah? Recycling is locked off and have direct.
That's what we've done in the past.
No recycling? No recycling for the next two weeks and then.
Now, bring it back to the second part of this, the employees. Um, I think the whole board's concerned that we don't lose our part-time employees, as we know, they've been hard enough to get. And we have some really good ones right now. And I know they can sign up for unemployment services, but I've been hearing that's pretty well done, like on TV.
Well, yeah, they're having problems with, with the site. There is a hot number, a hot phone number that they can call. But that's, uh, unemployment is available to, uh, anyone that's affected by this and it's not chargeable to the employers. It's being paid through the federal funeral taxes that they take out, you know, so they're allowed to collect. And they are waiving the first week, something we've been trying to bring back to what it was before, but at least they're waiving that now, so you get a check right away. And just getting signed up, after that, it's, it's a matter of them going on once a week to make sure that they're still out of work to collect.
So what if we did this? We talked to you in a couple of weeks. What we know, you know, can look back at the payroll, see what, say for instance, what one employee's been doing twenty-five dollars a week, just using that as a number. Pay them what they've been for the next two weeks, rotate the schedule, so that they're, they're actually there, working. But when they're, when they're not there, they're still getting their house or not, so I have to lose them. We, we're talking two weeks, the money's already budgeted. I don't feel it as a waste.
So give them, so if you schedule eleven hours this week, they're still gonna get paid.
They're still gonna get your pay.
Starting as two weeks, but I can foresee this going much longer.
Right, but we could, this will buy some time, so they're not, you know, they're not dropping the bomb on, coming on going, hey, yes ma'am. No week, no work for you until further notice. This gives them something. I know, and by then, who knows, maybe the ground will be dry.
I feel that way, but at the same time, they will not be able to apply during that period.
I don't know. What, what he wants to do is supplement the salary you.
I, I understand that, but I'm just thinking if it does go further, um, it'll be more challenging.
No, it depends when they get laid off.
Mm-hmm.
So if they get laid off two weeks from now, what we're giving them is the same pay.
Yeah.
So they're working.
Right.
And once we terminate them, then when they're not working, they can sign up.
Well, we're not, we're hopefully not terminating more than just.
Well, when that's what it's gonna be, a temporary, it's a temporary referral, you know?
Right.
I just, I, I think we should really, you know, on the side of caution.
And I do know that the federal government or the state, I will say federal, but the state government has allowed for people losing portions of their hours to apply, so. They could even start applying.
Yeah, what happens is if you, if you're collecting the maximum, which is over twenty-six a week, you can make up to a hundred thirty dollars.
Yeah.
It doesn't affect your maximum benefit.
Right.
So depending on where they are with their, with their maximum weekly benefit, they'd be able to earn a small amount. It wouldn't be charged against their maximum weekly benefit.
We owe you that something.
Yeah, you gotta remember, unemployment doesn't give you your pay. We give a fraction.
You know, some of these, some of these guys do have families going.
Jeff, what did you have?
I, I got an, an idea that, uh, everybody would benefit a little bit from it. Um, it might not be the most glamorous thing, but.
They could.
They have two vehicles at the transfer station now, so without robbing one from the transfer station, there's a lot of trash on the side of that down road. Incredible amount of cans and stuff like that. You know, I mean, it's, it's real. It's no, no leaves are out, there's no, there's no poison ivy, the snowbanks are gone, which is pretty unusual for this time. If, if you wanted to give them, I'm not saying make them do it as a steady diet, if you wanna supplement some of their work at the transfer station. I mean, you probably would wanna send two people out in a truck. I mean, hey, you know, just because of that type of thing, maybe. It might be a way of doing something, at least get something back and they would still be able to get some.
Do you coordinate that? I think that's.
No, that's a good idea because what you could do instead of, you know, having, this fire was total. Instead of having, you know, two guys in, two guys at home, two guys reading, two guys running to pick up.
Roping around maybe.
So we'll take it up.
Unless one guy wants to do it all, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Before we, before.
But that's something to think about.
I'd like to hold back on that with the board, and I discussed that and try and make sure there's no liabilities to the town on that, so. Before we implement that tonight.
Town employees.
I know.
It's all town employees.
But it's a whole different job than they used to be out on the roadway. And I, I just wanna make sure that we're on the right uniforms. Make sure we're not.
I mean, at some, at some point, you gotta.
I just wanna know, don't wanna go too fast and make.
Yeah, but at some point, you gotta say, hey, look, you know? They walk on the side of the road. We have volunteers that pick up on the side of the road.
I mean, I would think, I mean, I mean, Jeff might have a couple of signs we could throw up.
Yeah, we got signs.
We got safety.
I, I'm just trying to promote, I thought it was a reasonable idea, because.
I think it is reasonable, Jeff, I just wanna make sure we go through the proper thought process.
Yeah.
You know, you have people opening up doors, jumping out to grab trash. It's.
Oh, you.
A little bit different than their normal job that they're set up to do down there, whether they're properly trained for it or not, it might be something.
I would hope we hire people that are astute enough to walk on the side of the road and crash on the thing. I, I mean, if they're not astute enough to do that, they shouldn't be working around equipment.
But also, if we don't train them to do a function and they're doing it and something happens, we might open up like, okay. Just wanna think about it, can we do it?
Yeah, alright.
Slow rate down a little bit.
Well, you're looking for something to pay the guys without giving them a gift, because that wouldn't be fair to the rest of the town employees that are working. To just say, well, we're gonna pay anyone who pays.
But the rest of them don't do trash all the time.
But they hit, they're in the trash business. It's kind of parallel, isn't it? Whatever. I just thought it was an idea. And now there's no brush, there's no poison ivy, you don't have to worry about anybody getting poison ivy.
No, I think it's a good idea. I just wanna think about it a little bit and see how we're gonna implement it.
We gotta make a round of Kimball Pine. We'll find that system.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, yeah, the volunteers have been doing it. Give them a break. Whatever. That was just an idea.
And then, and pretty much what I've seen when people doing their trash pickup, it's a matter of, they're parking the vehicle and they're walking a section of the road. And then they can leave their bags there, go back, get the truck, you know, if they don't wanna carry them, leave them, pick them up on the.
They're gonna be training them, you know?
You still have the blue bags.
I can get the blue bags.
Yeah, because they have the bright blue bags that you just leave them tied up on all the sides.
So the town road, it's not like it's a highway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, yeah, I was thinking.
Town roads. Yeah, my road.
Yes, exactly. All, all those.
Yeah.
You know, I just wanna, wanna think it through, like, we're not gonna do peak hours of travel.
Yeah, that's fine.
Even our town road gets a little dangerous during those hours, I hope it's slow. That's true.
Might slow people down, staying out there.
We're only driving a limited amount of hours, we're not trying to do too long either.
Yeah, exactly.
You're still gonna be cycling through.
I don't know, we'd be, I don't know, we'd be in the town.
Just to keep them busy.
Yeah, we're looking at what their schedule is, you know, as, as long as it's not a Saturday.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
Some of the.
During the week.
Saturday the traffic moves pretty quickly.
But mid-week, mid, you know, the, the meat of the day there.
I, I, I think that, that's actually a pretty good idea, 'cause at least they get, for a short time, they'll get the roads.
Yeah, 'cause it would be a short, you know, be a short project. Fill the gap for a little bit, help take these off. Yeah, help take these off.
Always wins.
If you think about it, if you walk some of the roads and you look in the woods and look at the tires.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, you know?
No, we definitely. We're gonna bring that back and put it in the full hoppers.
It's all, you gotta jump, we can move it.
Yeah, alright, I think, um.
I can tell you the three things you're gonna vote on.
Yeah, here it comes.
Here it comes.
Everybody over eighteen?
Fun life, fucking knowledge.
Yeah.
Donald, right?
Those are all mine.
Start a whole net.
The little net bottles.
Moving on, um, I think we've gone through your department. I think we've got some good dialogue. Um, the board and I are gonna meet a little bit later on some other issues, so we'll discuss that.
So you'll have Lena or can connect with her tomorrow?
Yes, yeah. And so we're, I think it looked like the board, we were in consensus of either utilizing them to do that or the first two weeks, paying them when they're not on anyway. So I think that we'll try and utilize that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's a good idea. Just might do the same, I could be anything, but that's got a good point, you know, there.
But you know, I'm thinking a window like ten to three or nine to three, something to keep it so that the bulk of the traffic's gone by on any of the roads. So.
Those are the hours of days not driving.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Lena.
The traffic has slowed down considerably without school.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it has.
Five people are watching. Those people pushing maybe.
Okay, moving on, next department.
Highway department.
Um, I talked to Pete. I mean, we really don't have a lot of concerns. I mean, the way it's structured, we don't have many employees, there's no real interaction. It's Pete and I mostly and a lot of stuff he does on his own. He has limited interaction with residents and stuff.
So you'll have full services.
I, I don't see, at this point in time, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Right. I didn't either. I just figured I'd include you.
No, I, but I did talk to Pete, make sure he was comfortable with everything and, you know, he is, he's got no problem, you know? He has no concerns and like I said, it's, it's pretty limited. You know, we don't have, really have much interaction. You know, it's six feet of distance and all that can be easily mapped.
Fire department?
Yeah, I got a few things going on, obviously. Close the building to the public because people do meet in our meeting room, um, different town groups, so we'll shut that down. Um, working to find some more protective equipment for our department. Having a hard time finding that. Uh, put an order in with the state through the feds Tuesday. Some other departments have already got some equipment, uh, so hopefully we can get enough protective equipment. Kind of skis us on a few items. Had a conference call, the mutual aid system, um, yesterday, there's stuff at the mutual aid level we're looking at. At dispatch center that we've shut down to the public. Nobody can go in there. They can't have food delivered, they can't have mail delivered. You know, we're really limited on dispatches and if any of those guys get sick, we'd be top shade. Some towns are concerned with losing employees. See, you watched the news tonight, Salem had seven firefighters get exposed, so. I'm not sure how many firefighters they have, but you lose seven people on one call, so that could happen around the compact. So we're looking at, uh, how you back to those positions, um, like you're, say for both, for example, they have six firefighters. They have three, four that's gonna get sick, I don't think I don't operate fire department, so.
Right.
We're making contingency plans for that, even Dunbar, you know, five to six of our EMTs, uh, get sick. Uh, yeah, we couldn't run the ambulance, so, you know, how are we gonna run the ambulance if we had no EMTs in town? So those are the plans we're working at at the compact level. Um, looking at the whole of this, state's doing some things that are gonna relieve us. Uh, one is the, the governor just made executive order today to re-waive how many licensed people have that on an ambulance transport. Down to one EMT paramedic, so that means the driver could be a firefighter, so you're not exposing both, you know, too many of your medical people. Turn them, we, we've changed some operating procedures, excuse me. Uh, less people going to calls, less people going in and have, um, assess the patient. You know, minimize as much as we can. Bunch of policies, lots come out from CDC, lots come out from the state EMS, lots come out from, um, you know, other agencies in the state homeland security, health and human services. They just said they get twenty, twenty-five emails a day, it's time to, you know, decipher everything that's going on, it's happening so quick.
And some were pretty repetitive also.
Yeah, you get some from multiple agencies sending the same thing. Uh, but, you know, we, we, we'll deal in ambulance with the hospital, um, there's big changes at compact hospital, and we're gonna blow the patients. So all those things that, you know, we're discussing in meeting at the station, as I mentioned, the floor, forestry suggesting, you know, do permits in person. Um, you know, let them go online, there's a system to go online. Uh, you know, just a lot of.
Can that be put out on the website that no fire permits will be issued?
In person.
In person, you're right.
Yeah. You could, uh, you know, go to the.
Go to the state website.
Right, 'cause we're getting in the spring, people wanna burn.
Bob Stone has that.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, and most every town shut their fire department down to the public, you know? A lot of them obviously are manned, so people come to the door and, you know, they won't allow anybody in, in the stations. Um, you know, like I said, obviously we're not a manned station, but.
Yeah, no tours at the station.
Yeah, no, no tours unfortunately. Uh, so, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we're doing like that internally that, you know, it might really affect the public dealing with us, but. It's gonna affect the way we view the public. And there's, there's some EMS that just about the new state protocol called protocol on, uh, dealing with COVID nineteen. And, you know, we need to review all that stuff, so. We're busy at the station, just trying to keep up to date on how we should handle these fellows, 'cause, you know, it's gonna be a matter of time we get one. So, you know, protecting the personnel is a big thing, so we don't get exposure. I'm sure you've seen workman's talks come out with a.
Primax.
Primax has come out with issues, uh, you know, how are you gonna deal with a person if they get exposed? I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot to it. But again, you know, it's fluid, it's changing almost please daily, if not hourly, what's happening in the states, so. And that's what we're doing, but, you know, we still gotta, we still gotta perform our job and, and, and me, you know, do stuff. And we have stuff we have to do at the station on Monday night. Someone suggested cancel our training, but, you know, that stuff we, we have to get done. You know, we're getting into the spring, our trucks need to have more of your stuff put back on, so I can't really cancel our meetings, but, uh, you know, we can space each other out. Usually we don't have that many people come, you know, green and thin people, so that's how we're gonna operate right now, so something else comes along.
Thank you, Chief. Next department, Lena?
Uh, police department. We put together some force protection for our calls. We've done my dealing with, how we're gonna deal with, uh, people who are possibly infected, contaminated, um, you know, um. Deal with our personal protective equipment and decontamination procedures and just everyday hygiene with your area, vehicles. We haven't shut our building down. We are fortunate the way that it is built, that, that the air tends to blow from the inside of the building out through the service window. So we do have that positive air pressure pushing it out, out of where we actually work. Um, we did put the sign that I told you about earlier, we're trying to keep sick people out of the, out of the building. So for right now, we're, we're on our, uh, our lowest threat level. And what we're doing is we're trying to encourage people to do reports by email or by telephone, uh, whenever, whenever it's feasible. Vacant house checks, civil crimes, uh, those types of things, we can handle them on phone or by email. Uh, we will set up appointments for people to come in, um, and that's kind of how we end up where we're, we're dealing with crimes a little differently. And traffic enforcement a little differently, although we are still doing those operations. Um, we have a change, the way we're dealing with the court, prosecutor's office, um, because of the changes they made to protect their own staff and everyone. As things begin to ramp up and the risk infection becomes greater, what we'll do is we'll, we'll dial back even further on that face-to-face, uh, responses. And we'll deal with active things, but, um, again, we're trying to do more over the phone or by, uh, by email. And, uh, if things ramp up, so we, we begin getting effective cases, effective cases actually in town or, uh, quite closely around town. Then we'll, we'll go to our next level, we'll actually secure the building, grab a lot of people in and, um. To really triage what it is we deal with. We still have to, we, we're in a job where we still have to hands-on with people, mind with people sometimes. So we, we'll run those risks, but we do have decontamination procedures in place that we got from, from the state, um, on, on how to deal with that stuff. One of the questions I, I did have for John was, do you have, you have a washing machine at the station?
Nope.
And does it deal, is it a high temperature machine?
You can adjust the temperature.
So is this something we, if, if we make an arrest and we deal with somebody who's, uh, exposed, is that something that we could wash and close in high temperature and control the virus? And so that's an option that, you know, I, I encourage that people to have extra clothes and, and do make an arrest, at least if they can change, you know, decontaminate, wash their stuff. And, um, and not bring that home to the families. So we, we do have some procedures in place and we, and we're flexible. So we, we do have some procedures in place, and we, and we're flexible, we'll ramp up, we'll ramp down depending upon what's going around. We still want to deliver the maximum services that we can, with protecting the, uh, force and the public at the same time. Okay, anybody have any comments?
Hey, what, the library is the last department on the list, and they've already, you know, closed their building, um, based on the fact that they're associated with school.
Yep.
Um, and they didn't want all the families home having, you know, find their building a place to go to do.
And the school closed down their sports academy, so that's.
I believe so, but I, what I'd like to do. What I'd like to do for all of these departments, where everyone's starting to develop their own personal, um, protocols, I would like to, you know, list every single department on that homepage of the website, so that I can have the link, whether you take it to your website or take it to a PDF, the data, and look, if you're going to deal with the police department, the transfer station, town clerk, everyone will have.
Your PDF would be right below you, the police department.
Yeah.
Linda's PDF will be there.
Yeah.
Fire department's PDF will be there.
Yeah, I think, um, that would be really helpful for the public.
And that is right, and that's why I was hoping you could give the camera the, the address of the town's works, I mean.
Okay, I'll post that on Dunbar and H.org, and it will be right on that home screen when you get there.
You can write it on the board if you want.
I just wanna put on there that these protocols will subject, be subject to change.
Yeah.
As this, um, virus involves. And so, uh, we should be recommended to jump out.
Bob and I both signed, you and, and probably run them all, if you wanna send. We'll hand it back to Lena to keep on coming up. We're gonna keep a file of the COVID-19 dangerous information at the town office here, if somebody needs to reach Lena and get, get in touch with any of the information we've talked about here tonight.
You see the right to know?
Yes, I do, exactly.
The, um.
Expecting our meetings to look, uh, compact level.
Lena, before I hop onto another subject, we had the, uh, our health officer also give us a, uh, list of things they're following, and the seven items that the governor has asked us to, you know, kind of let people six feet farther. The only one I didn't understand is they want you to stand on your elbow, and then they want you to bump elbows.
The same elbow?
He didn't say.
Well, you don't pick up the elbow, right, Bob?
Yeah, don't get your stab.
And the stab, and hey, the only other thing is, um, Jeannie gave us a, some information here.
I'll make sure I include everybody's, the welfare, everybody.
So we have some information from our. Wait, you get one on the north.
I don't think you have a building, Paul.
I do.
Not important.
Well, I said, in general, we've been working together to come up with protocols, and they did provide the selectmen with, uh, a list, but the biggest question from them is, how do they conduct their regular business? And we wanted to know if the doors were gonna be locked, so.
Until today, until today.
Inspections, permits, all that?
Yeah, they're still gonna process them, but by appointment, so you commit like they had one today, and they'll review the plans, keeping the proper distance and all that. So they'll have a person and a time to go through that process. Now, we've been doing inspections on houses that are new construction, but no occupied houses is what I'd like to go over. I've seen that in the other towns like Gostown, they're doing inspections, but not in occupied homes.
Yeah. Don't do anything in your house, now's the time you're looking, yeah? Wait, permits, leave all the thieves?
Keep that to a low level here.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Landry, before you move on to another subject, I wanted to thank the board for, um, having this meeting tonight, calling us all together, and this has been really great teamwork.
Thanks for starting us out.
My pleasure, and I also wanted to comment that as the week has, is day by day, I've noticed that we've all become more aware. We've worked much better together, we're all very much aware of each other's personal space. We're not always able to keep the six-foot wolf thing going just because of the layout of the building, and I wanted you to know that everybody who works in this building has been really super about working together, and, uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go on to a, I believe they're over here, Tom and Tommy Sullivan. Lena, I don't know if you know, but I, we probably won't be bringing your subject up anymore, if anybody does, one leave, I don't think the police department's gonna stay, but if anybody wants to, one. All right. Um, here on the agenda tonight, and we do have a letter from you people, um, that you addressed your selectmen on some subjects with the police department, and an event that happened in your home. And, uh, all three selectmen have read and signed your letter that has come to us. We are very concerned about it. Um, we did talk with the chief briefly this afternoon, myself, uh, we talked with him and gave him a couple of questions on the previous weeks as well. Lena's been keeping us updated with the contacts she's had with you two, and, uh, tried to get this communication down. And, uh, I think all the selectmen have read this at this time. And we are concerned about it, and we understand where you're coming from, and I read your letter very thoroughly. And, and you know, until I read your letter, I was unsure of her exact hours with the police department as well, and I did get some clarification from the chief. And at one time, it had been a cutoff around twelve or one o'clock at night, and then we had so extended weekend hours and whatnot going between one and two o'clock at night. And I don't know if there was ever a hard line of where they cut off depending on the officer working, what they were scheduled for the next day. Uh, there's a lot of different things that affect the hours, and in talking with the chief today, um, pretty much, they have coverage until midnight, I'll let them speak to it, and then after that period, some of the different coverages, and some was between twelve, twelve-thirty, and two o'clock depending on the days and the person working. So, I guess I'll let you guys address the board, give us your concerns and questions, and, um, then we'll let the police department answer as many of them as we can.
Yeah, I think, I think my three questions kind of just sum up the concern, which is, what is the official policy?
On the hours, right?
Right. And then based on that, wh- what are we supposed to do in an emergency situation? And we call nine-one-one, I, I assume that, I'm hoping that's the right thing to do. Um, and then what should our expectations be?
Uh huh.
You know, I work in a business where it's all, our customers have service-level agreements with us.
Yeah.
And we get back to them within this much time, no matter what, some way, somehow. I would like to think that there's an emergency situation happening at someone's home, that there will be somebody there within X minutes. One, somewhere or the other, if it means calling someone and they get out of bed, then someone gets out of bed and gets in their car, turns the light on, and gets there within so many minutes. And then, you know, regardless of what the policy is, like I said, it's imperative that there's off-hours way for help. I'm, I, I've taken hunter safety, and I have a gun. I am not a gun guy, um, I'm not against guns, but for me to have to say, okay, I haven't looked at that clip in twelve years while it's hiding in my bathroom way up there, and the gun is over in that lockbox, and, uh, you don't know who's, who's gonna come through the door, and, and, you know, this, this, the dispatcher, when we called them back after the fact, it's like, what am I supposed to do? And they were like, not really sure, either. And they contacted, what if the state police didn't warn her?
Right.
And, you know, we're, we're gone, we're, and, you know, I travel, I don't like telling everyone in the room hear this. And, um, she's home alone, and we have a.
This is videotaped.
We have a golden retriever who, uh, will kill you, but, you know, we try to sit him, sit him, he's like, goes down, barks three times, it goes back, she's like. So anyway, it has nothing to do with the event of that night, what this has to do is the realization that we needed help at that hour, and really, the other side of that phone failed.
Right.
It was, it was complete failure.
Right, and I, and I think, you know, our police department probably will talk to dispatch down there and try and understand a little bit more about that, because it does sound like the dispatcher failed you a little bit, because I think that our backup is state police at those hours of night, and it's probably gonna be that way for some time because of our limited resources within the town and the department. We're not gonna have full night coverage probably for many, many more years here, so. I don't wanna, you know, say something to you that's gonna make you think that you're safe tomorrow.
I guess we, when I moved here seventeen years ago, we just called our friend Don Andrews, and he, he said, I'll be over any time.
Right.
Um, but, so should we call and lie and say we have a fire? We've been to my chimney before.
Two times.
But, uh, we don't carry guns, so.
It's all right, I'm, I'm.
It doesn't need to be a fire.
Yeah, we have the homes.
So, so the, the hours, you know, after midnight, pretty much, there could be somebody on there till one or one-thirty, but you're not gonna know that without calling.
But what, so what, so we call nine-one-one? Is there a service-level agreement with the state, with neighboring towns? Is there a promise that if your resident is in danger and needs our help, someone will be there in seven minutes, whatever the number is, is there?
Well, there is, there is some, uh, town agreements with the reciprocal towns, and I'll let the police department speak, and then obviously, they're gonna know more about that than me, but. I think, why don't we let them up here?
Yeah.
Let's let them break it down a little bit, just so you know, and we'll know better as a board, 'cause until those hours came up, I wasn't sure of our exact coverage, I had heard that, you know, it had gone from one to two o'clock, but it was more over here, say, several years back, I didn't know where our policy is now. And back when some of those things were discussed, it was a whole different chief, a whole different department too, so. As these departments evolve, and they have to use their budget and hours and work around all that with their existing personnel, and all the personnel issues that come up, you know, I'm sure some of that has changed over time too, so. We'll let them speak to it, so you guys will know, and then, uh, and then we'll talk about the nine-one-one issue, and then you'll know more what you can expect from the town, and it'll be a little clearer, and hopefully this doesn't happen again. You know, there are some, some incidences that happen at certain times, and, uh, it may never, may never get any better on that particular date and time, but we'll hopefully go forward here.
I think that's the idea behind it, it's just, I mean, it's for the town. Our incident is gone, it may happen again, we may have something else, but there's other people who come to a lot of their homes, but we have boundaries when our kids are home.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's just scary.
You know, as, as a board of selectmen, people like us to come in there and do this job, and we watch over a broad bunch of stuff under the town, and one thing we oversee is, we oversee all of their budgets as they come to us at the end of the year. And they'll come and ask for another part-timer, another full-timer, they wanna fill out and expand their hours and expand their department. But we also, on the other hand, have to watch out for the taxpayers and your, and your tax bill, and so we, we're all about, uh, growth, but it's a limited growth, and it's barely slow growth so that our tax rate can sustain it, and part of that is our job, and we try and balance that very carefully for everything we do. Two years ago, we brought a part-timer and made him into a full-timer, um, because we didn't wanna lose him. And, uh, we just lost another person to another town, 'cause other towns have some better incentives. You know, it was a part-timer, but a thirty-four-hour week part-timer, I think. So now we've gotta replace that, we've got two other part-timers that have come in with limited hours. So it's, when you bring in somebody in the police department, it takes a long time to train them, a long time to get them in the same work environment that you want them to be, and for them to be able to take care of our public, and it's about a two-year process. And sometimes we get them there, and somebody else is dangling a carrot out here, and we lose them, and, uh, you know, they, they bring the information to us, and sometimes we have to let them go because we are a town that, you know, is trying to balance all those things, so. We'll let them speak to their hours, and then we'll come back to it, but I think, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background as a board, what we try and look at. The way the process works, we're part-time, we're part-time. And our hours run around seven AM to around midnight and beyond, depending upon day of week and who we have scheduled. I mean, I come in in the morning, sometimes I come in at six, I come in early, I usually go in at half to seven. So the, the coverage is, is a little bit flexible. Um, when, um, when we leave, we call the, uh, dispatch, and we, we sign off. They call the state police and put them on call. When we lock the door and turn on the alarm, it's the state police that are, you know, they're in law enforcement to the town of Dunbar, until somebody comes on the next morning, whatever time that may be. So, um, the, the calls get routed over to the state, they handle dispatch, they handle all their own dispositions. A lot of times, we don't know what happened during the, um, during the previous evening, it's all, you know, by them. If we wanna find out, we call over there, try and get somebody who knows something about it, who might have to speak to the trooper who actually responded. That's how we get the information. And they, they do, they really do a good job. There's, uh, there's not an awful lot of them, and they do cover a big area, so you have to expect delays, uh, dependent upon what the nature of the call is. And in your particular case, there was a trooper who was dispatched, it sounds like there was, uh, more of an issue with communication that you didn't know the trooper was dispatched, you didn't know the trooper was backed off. So that information didn't get you where it really should. Um, just to kind of give you an idea, what happened with state police responses. In two thousand nineteen, the state police responded to twenty calls at Dunbar for, for the whole year. Thirty-four in two thousand eighteen, seventeen in two thousand seventeen. So it's not a high volume of calls they respond to, and a lot of those calls are alarms that they get sent to. So that's how, how it's covered with, with state at nighttime. Chief, can you just think anymore to your hours and how you guys schedule, and just talk to that, because, um, there's, there's part-timers and there's full-timers, and these guys use that mix, uh, to fill out through weekends and through different times and hours, so. It's pretty evolved, I think. Chris and Sergeant, run a lot of the, uh, things.
That's not my house, it's on my business card, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I didn't see it. It's a stamp, it's on my, on my. Okay. Jonathan, you can all take a look. Um, so, so basically, uh, to piggyback off of the chief's comments, um, I know the officer does the scheduling now, but I was doing it for quite a while, and basically, when I do the scheduling, well, I have to allocate the limited personnel we have to the most amount of hours that I can, um, to cover the most amount of calls for service that we handle, so. Using the example of last year, um, generally between the hours of one and seven, state police had to come out to town, uh, a total of twenty times for the entire year. Generally, yep, yep, usually in that timeframe, so, um, if, if we look at our call for service number, and I'll, I'll include, let's say maybe five thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, and that includes calls for service we give from the public, but also police initiated, so if we do a, a business check, or vacant property check, or stop a car, that generates a call number. So, uh, using five thousand as a rough figure, state police covered twenty. So, we try to allocate the resources that we have, it covered the vast majority, and when I say vast majority, I mean ninety-nine point nine something percent. Um, so I, 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 I feel terrible, um, about what happened to you guys, and, um, I think the chief hit the nail on the head, I think it was an unfortunate series of, um, communication issues, because there was a law enforcement officer on their way to your house, and they understood that the individual had left, and they took that as, okay, we, we no longer need to respond. So what we generally try to do is, uh, you know, if, if I come in in the morning, if I'm working a day shift, some dispatchers are, are better at it than others, but they'll sometimes send over a call sheet, they'll fax it over to the agency, so when we sign on in the morning, we can see, oh, there was, uh, uh, more vehicle accident on Montalongo, we were at three-thirty in the morning. We'll use yours for an example. Um, generally, what we try to do is, is follow up with the residents, say, hey, I understand state police responded last night, I just wanna follow up. Is there anything we can do for you? Um, you know, would you like to chat? And we're, we're trying to remind our people to be more cognizant and make sure that they're doing that. Um, so I know it's not as good as responding in person, but we still wanna keep that personal connection with our residents and be able to follow up the next day.
That kind of felt good.
So I guess, so I get it about the guy getting called off and communication problem, but, okay, I, I throw on Warner. How far away could someone be when we call them alive? Is there a guarantee that they're at least, you know, further than Concord, Gostown, you know? Do, do we have some kind of?
Chris, why don't you tell them about our community support on, on our standard hours, how the other towns cover for each other and how you guys cover in different towns?
So during our hours of.
So during our hours of operation, um, we have what's called mutual aid, so every police department around us, we have a signed agreement essentially saying that we can provide services for them, they can provide services for us, so when we're during, when we're working during our operating hours, if we need backup from the town of where, they can come over and vice versa. Um, as far as state police goes on the overnight, um, they have a very large patrol area to cover, so I can't say they could be here, they could be there. They do generally try to stay local to kind of the Bo Junction, eighty-nine, ninety-three area, but with that being said, they're covering, um, probably upwards of like dozen towns in Merrimack County on the overnight shift, and I, I will say to, to Dunbar and P E's credit, the coverage that we have, the personnel we have, is actually better than some other towns that have been given us, um, so, you know, we, I know it's not, um, uh, completely peace of mind, but we do try to provide as much coverage as possible, and unfortunately, this, this was an anomaly that was obviously upsetting for you guys in terms of.
So let me just think through some, 'cause my brain goes to crazy places.
Sorry.
So like, so like I mentioned, you know, I, I've worked in the software business my whole life, we supported our customers. You mentioned the number twenty, thirty, forty, you didn't even go as high as fifty, so if you had fifty of these a year, that would only be once a week. You know, we used to have a thing where, hey, Tom, you got the pager this weekend, so I don't know, so it's just one of our clients had a problem, Tom's the guy, paper goes up, and, oh, unlucky me. Have you guys ever considered just doing that? I mean, having?
It's, it's been done in the past, years ago, I think it started around two thousand seventeen.
Oh, really?
When we were, we were a different, we were a different town, different agency, much smaller, um, so that did come to an end. The reality of it is, um, I'm the only full-time officer who lives in town. We have another part-time officer who lives in town, we have, um, another full-time officer who lives probably fifteen minutes away, the other two full-time officers live forty, forty-five minutes away. So, that's basically how, it would be me all the time, and I could never leave town, but that's how it would be. And I'm, I'm sixteen years old, I wake up in the middle of the night, if I, if I go into a call, I'm, I'm grotty, I'm not sharp, and it, it's not, it's not safe, you know? Or if I, if I get up, if I have to go into a call with one of our officers already there, at least I get somebody who's, who's really sharp there, you know? But, but to, to get up and, and to do it, do a complicated domestic or, uh, or something like that in the middle of the night, or a, or a D W I crash, you need to be sharp to do that stuff.
So, you know? And so when your hours, when you are, uh, there is a, there is a lead officer, tell them that, you know, Chris, if you can, when you guys are on regular call hours, there is a lead officer, um, you know?
An on-call supervisor.
Right, that's what I wanted to tell them.
Yes, we have, we have, uh, currently three, so it should be two on-call supervisors, so that when the, um, when the officers are on working, the, the patrolmen are on working, if they need some kind of supervisory, uh, you know, question or they need per, or permission, well, we have a list of notifications that we wanna kick up from patrol level to a supervisor level, there's somebody who's on call to take those calls, but they're not on call to go out and respond, um, during the off-hours. They won't, you know, one of us will respond if there's a, um, some kind of serious crime that, that requires a multi, multi-officer or a, or a supervisor response, we'll do that, but that's kind of where we end. And when, when we lock the door or turn off the alarm, uh, the state police come on, and it's their show between the time that we leave until the time we come in.
So, even better or worse, what kinds of random crimes happen in the wee hours of the morning? There's only twenty or thirty, I feel, I feel better about nothing than that.
Mostly the first.
Yeah.
Go, go ahead. It's, uh, I actually looked today to gather some of our stats, and it's, uh, it's mostly, um, earlier alarms that turn out to, turn out to be false alarms, uh, we've had a few suspicious activity calls, um, and then there's the occasional D W I crash here and there, but as far as, um, I don't wanna downplay, uh, certain, certain incidents, but as far as active violent crimes, we've been very fortunate on the overnight shift that I have, that, um, those types of incidents happen.
But I think maybe you, as I was saying to me, um, there's more that meets the eye with this one.
I've spoken to him many times.
Yes, you're the one, but, and it has nothing to do with him, but, but there are other people who are now involving themselves with families that are opioid addicts, I cancel women, uh, he has a restraining order on him for his wife and children, and so these things are gonna be happening more, because he felt like he could come to us, which if he had at six o'clock, it'd have been a lot different, but this is, there are other people who are, what I'm saying is, the dynamics are changing, ever changing.
Well, you guys know that.
And you know that more than I do, so, and that doesn't mean, okay, now I'm doing a certain job, can you protect me a little better, but I just, just to have peace, you know, it's, it's a little, it's a little disconcerting when you see it.
I guess the only, you know, the peace of mind that I, I can try and offer you guys and put in perspective is that there was a police officer on his way, and I think that if, I think this would have been mitigated if you guys had received a follow-up phone call.
But I, you may have been closer than we know.
Right, right, and, and, you know?
You guys would have never heard about it.
We, we bear some blame for that, for not doing the follow-up, and for that I apologize, and we'll make sure that moving forward, we do that better, because we do sincerely care about our residents, and we want you guys to feel safe. Um, so I think, uh, and I'm, I'm certainly not faulting state police, because they're spread thin and they're covering a very large patrol area, um, so just at least try to take comfort in the fact that, uh, that there was someone on the way, there was someone responding, um, and I think that through, through a series of unintentional miscommunication, the ball was dropped, and I'm not looking to place blame anywhere, we all share some blame in it, um, and I think it's been a big, uh, learning experience for us at the police station, and it's kind of reinforced some of the values that we, we really try to have with our residents, so if, if that helps.
And to be fair to you guys, you know, in hindsight, there's was this crazed guy who we know, and honestly, I don't think he would, I don't think he would have done it. So, but we didn't know it was him at first. You know, you weren't, you're sleeping, your doorbell ringing, you're.
It's gonna sound sleepy, you can get grotty, yeah, it takes a while to get your hands straight.
And, and, and I wouldn't, but, but, we, I don't use the word fear, but I'm careful enough with this individual, but I wouldn't have gone to the door if I knew it was him. If, if I knew it was him from the outset, if he had called me five minutes before coming to my house, I still probably would have called the police.
Yeah.
'Cause why would you do this at midnight or less, you're full of drugs.
I'll, I'll tell you what, uh, do you still have my business card?
I do.
Um, I, I've chatted with him multiple times, I, I.
Like the guy when he had the woods on fire?
Yeah, um, so I, I'd like to think I have a fairly decent rapport with him, um, you know, we have some programs and services we can refer people to, and if you wanna give him my phone number and have him call me, even though he's not a Dunbar resident, I'd be happy to talk to him and just try to.
Cause he, he makes, he makes me.
He's a really bad tip, it may be the thing that.
Cause he remembers you talking to him.
Yeah, yeah, he, he, we, we chatted, it was a pleasant conversation, and I think, uh, if you wanna give him my information, I'm happy to talk to him, and then maybe by doing that, we can steer him in the right direction, but we can also kind of explain, hey, make sure you're not showing up at twelve-thirty banging on people's doors.
We're not the only ones that have been in this situation, but I just, yeah, it's very interesting.
It helps us understand how, how this works.
Well, that's why I wanted them to explain, you know, how they break their hours down and how they do have backup when there is, you know, on duty, um, and they do, as soon as that person goes away from Dunbar, I just learned today, they call dispatch, so that dispatch operator, when you call, should know, okay, the Dunbar office is gone, we have to go to state, and I think, I think that, you know, during that communication, you had him on nine-one-one, once you knew the person and they were walking away, they felt like maybe this, this had, you know, expired itself and there wasn't a need, and that's when the person may have turned around or whatnot, I'm not sure exactly when that happened, but.
It probably wasn't together.
Yeah, during that whole conversation, or they turned and went the other way and.
And, and honestly, it just helps to understand how this all works.
Right.
We didn't, we lived, lived here since two thousand two, January first.
Been there a long time.
And we just assumed, sorry, but we just assumed you guys are just always there, we love our police, that's why, it's like, you know, want a car, they get a car, if they want this, they get that.
If they could have a couple more, two or three more full-timers, they'd love it, but we kind of.
You know, this is nay-ah, and, and so when this happened, we're over here on this, and it's like, what are you, they've gone home, what are you?
No, nobody's here, can't wait, can't wait.
You know, and, yeah, so it's just, now we know, we understand, and I don't, I don't know if this, it's published how you guys work, I don't know how you do that, but does the town, does the average Joe town?
You know, at one, at one time, I think their hours were, uh, I couldn't discern, I was a little concerned about public, if because we do close, putting it out there, so that everybody knows that here's the time, come after this.
It's better just have this discussion after the break, I feel like.
We always.
We're not.
One o'clock.
Oh, it's, it's kind of a good opportunity.
If I didn't say a few words, I had a plan made a few directions between one o'clock and six in the morning on calls, we seem to have a lot of calls during those hours, probably out of those twenty, maybe half, release half, or five, five hours in a row, and I am amazed how quick the state police are there.
Oh, really?
We just had one, two weeks ago, D W I, they told us en route the guy was drunk, yeah, I left my house on Ranger Road, and I go, man, I'm gonna get here and confront this guy, you know, by myself, you know, it's a little scary, I come around the corner, three state troopers guys, I'm there, alright, they got the guy, come up, we got him, he's under arrest, thanks for coming, da-da-da-da, and that happens more often than not, you know, I don't, where do these guys come from in the middle of the night? During daytime, you never see a state trooper, and at nighttime, there's at least two on almost every call we go to, and actually last year, we had a domestic going, going bond, and two, three in the morning, we get there, six state troopers, were they, where did these guys come from?
So we can't tell. You're right, it could have been communication random while you were on the phone to her, maybe we said something and she sensed.
They seemed to sense that you knew the person, I think, and that might, and then the person was walking away or something, and I think that might have changed the whole thing with the person who was talking.
Yeah, we met, yeah, what was weird, that he sat in the driveway for.
He sat there for, uh.
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Which, that may not really know, but, yeah, it was, it was an interesting situation, and it did help to know who, uh.
We didn't know who was, by the way, and so, remember when I talked to you through the doorbell after the fire?
Yep, yep.
So I, I, I then prayed, I prayed through the doorbell, and I saw his face, I said, uh.
I mean, we've got cameras everywhere, and when he's away, he can talk through the door also, but I'll just tell you, I've never been afraid, and don't mind.
You know, you don't have, knowing what she's, we're just focused, we're gonna believe anything.
I'm just gonna say, I'm a lot of.
Yeah, I may have seen my chimney twice.
I had the same feeling, you know, who's gonna come in the middle of the night if he, if he's not on, but.
You know, don't trust him, go home, tell him you called.
And they seem to be really nice, nice guys and gals, you know, on medicals, they assist, they help carry the stretcher, I mean, they're not, you know, and some people have a, state troopers, uh, indifferent, but these guys at least come here and figure, I mean, maybe once or twice, you're gonna wait for them, but majority of the time, they're either there or.
That says one to you guys, maybe that's the relationship with Dunbar, because of the way you all.
Like I said, but sometimes you wonder where, where they get two or three in the, two, three in the morning, 'cause like, you know, they cover such, like you said, they could be, they could be anywhere in this, this district.
Well, that's good.
Well, appreciate you people coming in, 'cause I know it's not fun to come in and confront, you know, things that have happened, and talk about it, but I'm glad that you guys.
I used to work in the town.
Just wanted to, just wanted to understand.
Yeah, that's how you meant it, so we're just.
It gave me a better understanding of their hours and how they're working things, because, you know, that, like, she said, the department's changing, every year they change, they, you know, they lose people, they gain people, so, you know, I wasn't sure how their hours were structured anymore either, so, no.
It's not a blind, it's not a blind check for you guys.
Oh, no, I mean, at one, two o'clock in the morning, and this building was insecure for some reason, the wind was making the alarms go off, so the poor officer comes in, walks around with a gun, looking around, complete proof of the building, and says, when did you get off? He says, ten minutes prior.
Yeah.
And so, uh, it's a kudos to their department, they'll stay when they have to, but there's a, they have to sometimes go to work, but that's following morning too, they have to have it prepared for another shift.
Yeah.
I have been in touch with the crew commander there, and, um, let him know what happened, and he's gonna let his people know, you know, basically who, you know, we are, what your concerns are, so maybe he'll kind of stand a little more if they call there, so they aren't, they're much people.
Yeah, it's good to have things happen, because, as you can see, after two hours meeting, it's more than you were.
Sorry, I'm way through all that. I did look for you before we started the COVID-nineteen audio, and I'm like, alright.
It was fun, it's, yeah, before we moved here, I used to look up, the background was all transcripts, I used to re-select the meetings, and we had never lived in a small Manhattan, and it was just the most educational, entertaining, it was back when the Vanda Bogers were here.
And now you're watching on YouTube video.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so each Leo tapes, and then we have another girl, Linda Nickerson, that puts them online, so.
Okay.
We're in the town of Dunbar, and they come right up and they.
Excellent.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you.
Okay.
Thanks for having me, but I can't.
Yeah, we'll just.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. You can sign the D R A budget form, MS two thirty-two.
I've got all the files for us on here.
I'm sorry, there are a couple of things that I, basically, the file that we posted, um, prior to the meeting, and this is basically including the D R A, what are some tasks, if there were any that were missing, and that's the operating, I think, it's in twenty days after the meeting.
Like you are, sorry, uh, I didn't know what the yellow one might see with that last. Does that notice much?
No, no.
How is that?
Okay.
Summer schedule, huh?
You know, we should make a COVID schedule.
We even have to work every week in the summer, don't we?
No.
During the budget season. Thank you. All right, the next one on the, uh, schedule is the summer schedule for the selectmen, and, uh, we're going into this probably a week early, 'cause we're starting it, uh, because of COVID-nineteen, but we would have been starting it next month anyway. So, Lain has done this schedule for us, and she said she could alternate it, but this schedule works out with the most coverage, and we don't have any days doubled up, right, Lain?
Correct.
Uh, my only thing is, I know that coming into October last year, we came to several meetings and had very little on the agenda, I think we should carry it into the first two weeks of October.
The, uh, so. Meet me the first and the fifteenth.
Yeah, I think, 'cause we got the twenty first, so we would meet on the first, and we would meet on the fifteenth.
It would take eight, um, that's as long as a week, and then I work out this.
Oh, perfect, Mike, see that? How it works, and that's two one. You okay with that?
So, I'm, I'm fine, I guess that's the one I wanna ask them.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, as long as, uh, if we need to have a meeting, it's at the call.
Yeah, okay. And anywhere through this schedule, if we come onto a spot where we need to, uh, have a meeting, it is all.
Well, it's the only thing we also, you have to plan a date for, you have the personal plate update to interview, uh, not today, but just speaking.
Okay, so I included the most people in the schedule only because of this COVID-nineteen, and are you okay with going in that room? I think at this point, we're trying to come up with a plan so that, um, we either consolidate town business, minimize, uh, public interaction, um, if Leo's agreeable, if you want to close the, unless they have specific business with the board, close the meeting to the public, but have it available on video.
I read, uh, I read today where we can do that under special exception from the chair, allowing that to happen, but. But, uh, I think being every other week, if we can keep them limited in space, we'll try that.
Yeah.
And if there becomes a subject that's gonna have a lot of people, I think we may implement that, but it said that we have to implement that on a case by case basis.
Correct, yeah.
The other, the other equation was if someone has a concern, like it's been already believed before the meeting, discussing the meeting.
Yeah.
Without the meeting.
Right.
You have to allow public access and, and public access can be through having a telephone conversation.
Yeah.
And it can be from the.
So I will not be, um, asked to stay out of the meeting, I'll be allowed to be.
That's right.
Yes, yes.
And in fact, Leo, I had talked, whereas if it becomes to a point where you don't wanna come to the meeting, we may purchase town equipment. To do this, uh, function for the public anyway, because we would have to have it available to them. So if it comes to a point, Leo, where you're feeling that you can't make it, you let us know and we're gonna take the appropriate steps.
Yeah.
Okay? And then we'll be, um, um, we'll be. So I'm good with this schedule, if you can do those, um, two dates there in October. Anybody else have a bug, you have anything else on this schedule?
No, uh, you're gonna, are you gonna be next week?
No, we were gonna skip that.
Are you gonna wait until the ninth? Is that the one that's.
On the yellow, is it the second meeting?
Yeah, it's the yellow.
So the yellows are.
Yellow is a meeting day?
So in October, if you.
So you actually got two weeks to, you know, the stuff we want to look at, that, you know, we can work out what would you say. Right on, left hang and, you know, I mean, might give them a positive response.
Right. And we'll, if we leave an emergency meeting, if something brings up, just call us and we'll, uh, we'll schedule it as need be. And the same to Chief, if you see something we need to look at.
You're fine for me tonight?
Yes. We'll have an emergency meeting. We're gonna make time for you tonight.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, any, any more news on the summer schedule?
I just wanna let you know that I'm on, um, vacation leave the second of April.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that my office staff has everything they need to get you guys set up for your meeting.
Okay, and what about when you're on vacation, do we wanna have, um, Jennifer come in?
We could do that.
Why don't we do that on that date?
Okay.
But, um, until this COVID nineteen thing's over, we're gonna have her do the rest of the meeting minutes off the, uh, tape. Okay. All right, so the agenda box, let's, um, just go back in my file. Um, before we get into town business here, because there's quite a few things we need to sign on, um, why don't we go ahead and, um. Take care of John Wigan.
Thank you. Um, I, I didn't know you were doing ring events tonight, so I didn't have William's profile, but the emergency generator at the school, we've been holding on it last year repair.
I remember that.
It was pretty high.
Like eight thousand, right?
Yes, six or something.
Six, something like that.
In the meantime, I got the local guy in, uh, quality repair, doesn't have quality in me. And, uh, he looked at it a couple of weeks ago, contacted his, his guy, and then called me, uh, yesterday and the day before. Uh, cause we said that we'll, we'll parent this summer when school's out, so there won't be an issue with power. But now school's out for three weeks or more. But he contacted me the other day, looks like he's gonna have some time, I don't know if we can do it now. He is less than half and, uh, we get power for some powers.
That'd be great.
Worst case scenario is completely no recall, which is two thousand, his label is less than thousand, less than figured out. Uh, it could be less, once he gets it out, fixing the radiator shock, guy can just repair it, might just be a crack. Core, and so, uh, I said, well, I'll check on the school, see, you know, I didn't know how, what they were gonna have to staff the next couple of weeks. Talked to Prince Paul, he said, you know, it's gonna bury handful of people, nobody, right? So if they lost power, you know, to win an outage, it's all, no big deal, you know? So he said, he didn't have an issue with it, so I just wanna run by you in case he hopefully back, he has time to actually.
Are the emergency lights battery operated as well?
Yep, yep, in a school, they get that.
Yeah.
So they didn't lights, just, you know, they're on the computer or something, power. But, you know, the radiator is leaking, so, you know, something a little better.
Well, I think if you get scared of the John, that'd be great to get it done now.
Okay.
Can you get something from him and write him before, like, full estimate, anything?
You know how he is. But, uh, yeah.
Well, the only thing is, if he's looked at it, if he's given you, you know, and that, uh, verbal aspect, it's half the other one.
Oh, yeah.
And he's gonna, he's gonna write up whatever he does to the workforce, it's kinda hard for him to write the quote, he'd have to write it up both ways.
Yeah, cause he's not sure if we're gonna repair or if we're gonna report. You know, maybe the worst case scenario would be.
Yeah, the consensus to go ahead and.
Yeah, I think so.
Great, thank you. So if it gets done, it's not, we'll, we'll do it this summer, but.
What's the name of the guy who's doing it?
Last time, Ed, 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 Ed.
Okay.
Yeah, Ed.
I appreciate your comments with those people who are here also.
Yeah, like I said, we had really good luck, you know, we had the same issues, you know, who's gonna come?
I think that calm, when I calm them down, you do, you know.
But it might have been maybe one call that we've got there and we've gotta wait a little bit for the trip up. Like I said, I don't know where they come from, but you know, at night, you know. Yeah, this one down, yeah, road the other night, young guy at the corner, they're fresh, drunk.
Oh, really?
I'm there, and I kept calling back, so the guy's, oh, all involved, he's drunk, I'm there, and I'm gonna be here in a few minutes, I don't wanna confront this guy.
By myself.
And, uh, like I said, got there, two were there, and I passed one, another one coming, in the area of, we're all saying, it's great, and it happens a lot, those times of night.
On that truck, or?
No, just in town, regular troopers, you know, like I said, you hardly ever see one during the daytime, but. They come out of the woodwork somewhere, and, uh, and, you know, and they're very helpful, you know, they're not, you know, so makes you feel a little better, but you know. But like you said, sometimes one of those shifts, I thought you used to go to two o'clock in the morning. So just that.
I think you could, like, Chief, yeah.
But like you said, a lot of times they get caught, you know, just so they're getting to go home.
Right.
The call comes in, so they come to the call, so they end up staying over.
Right.
So they come with you, but, you know, that, that timeframe early in the morning, unfortunately, you can get some calls and, you know, at least they have no police to go with you, so.
Um, we're, we're gonna put a memo out, Chief, to try and have the department heads push off as many of the, uh, expenses as they can. Which you're real good at, you know, you get to the end of the year and you have some money left and, and you'll spend it then. Um, only for, if some of our tax revenues that are coming in get delayed because of the people can't afford to pay them. We're gonna have a, a little window here, so we're asking the department heads to try to take a look at their expenditures.
We also, we need to track what we're buying out for equipment too.
Oh, I meant to bring that up.
Because I think a lot of this might be reimbursable from the feds.
Yep.
When this thing gets over, I know a lot of our equipment is, they're not sure, you know, like overtime, if they have, pay overtime.
How are you doing on the mask up to use?
Like I said, I put it on there on the state, they're supposed to have some, but, uh.
I heard Manjus taking personal donations would be.
They might gain thirty-five cases.
And they have a hundred and fifty pounds of a cane.
Oh, a hundred and fifty, yeah, yeah. Uh, even some of these breweries are making up, uh, on the, uh, foods are making hand cleaner, which is great.
I found some one fifty-one in the cabinet, I'm gonna use it for.
Yeah.
The reason I asked about the mask is I went to my office at A and B, and they, they had them on the counter for sale.
Really?
You couldn't believe it. Never seen them there before.
Okay, cause towns have been going to like the hardware stores and other places.
And they have the, uh, you know, the screen that goes in there, the protective screen, they sold them with them, three sizes available on the counter.
How many got it stoned?
I don't know, but you might wanna get down. I can't tell you. A and B.
Yeah, the towns have been trying to, so part of this mutual aid thing, we're gonna, we're putting more down, somebody might have X or something, you can, you know, let somebody else borrow.
I can't imagine they're gonna have them long.
No, no, cause, uh, they have found some in some of these construction magazines that advertise, have, have them because medical people usually don't pick them up.
I don't, I don't know the proper number, but this guy was saying these are the better ones.
Yeah, that ninety-five to a hundred on best, or breastplate, you know, it's the best protection, but, uh, you know, surgical masks is. Not for us, but better than, you know, that's what's done on a patient or if you wanna have some in the room or something. Somebody can have a confident hack and, uh, ask them to put it on, but, and even those are getting shown, you know. Well, the dentist offices are closed, they, they can't get from masks, you know, that comes out, hospital are on the short.
Well, hopefully this curve doesn't last.
Yeah, really, I mean, really, at least last year, we lost some, and, uh, we could use, so hopefully we'll double up.
Okay, thank you. We'll probably revisit this in two weeks when we meet again.
Yeah, a little stuff, but three weeks on this stuff, they do a week behind us.
Right.
Or so many.
Well, I figured we're gonna, we're set up for two weeks next year, we need to adjust pretty much, cause we're gonna look at each department, see how it's working and not working and.
We'll split it anyway, and on April third, they're gonna evaluate what they're gonna do. I can see it, I don't see that coming back in two weeks, but.
No, I, all this stuff's gonna go at least four to six, I would imagine.
Yep.
They shut the schools down in California, they're going back to school in the fall.
Yeah, they're not even, gotta go back at all.
In Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania shutting down everything, everything, shutting down, commercial stores, everything.
Yeah.
I thought you said you're going back to Mexico.
No.
That's one thing that we're gonna do if you're early, it's out of control, so a mask, shut down, get over it.
The whole purpose is, really, they don't want the medical system overwhelmed, yeah, with this fight.
We have less beds and, like, for, uh, these other countries and the, the security there, you know, they know this, I believe.
Right. There's over four hundred people died in one year.
Twenty-four hours, they did, or cases, so.
Okay. Woody, we're gonna bring your subject back up quick, you wanna talk about working those guys' hours.
I can't. Yeah, I can't.
I wanna suggest.
Okay.
Woody, ten to three hours.
I'll grab it.
Okay.
Um, for them being on the road, and I don't care what part of that ten to three, if you wanna do twelve to two or twelve to three, you can schedule the guys' hours to work. And I would say until we open up that old truck, let's start by using that.
Okay.
Would you be opposed to if some of the guys wanna do on Monday, Tuesday?
I don't care about the days.
Okay.
So look at their hours, don't give them more hours than they've had, but try and keep their, keep their hours similar. An average?
Yeah.
And then if that doesn't work, we'll look at, the board and I will talk and we'll look at paying for their hours that they missed, at least for the first couple of weeks.
I think, you know, there's plenty, you know, like Leo said, and like Jeff said, you drive around, there's plenty, I mean, we're not gonna touch.
Well, there's some of that, and there's some additional work you can do at the transfer station.
We have some projects, but it's been a matter of, we, we need to get the ground drabber out a little bit, we've, we've got stuff to do.
Have you done your sweep up and spring cleaning?
Haven't done anything.
So you've got all that you can do.
We've actually been put kind of on hold for that because we're supposed to have a class, and.
For sweeping?
Yes, they, they gotta come in and show us how to operate the machine and, um.
No, I bet these kinds.
Uh, we got one of these now.
Are they gonna cancel that though, or?
Yeah, I, I don't imagine that the company's gonna wanna come out, and the other side of the coin is, I wanna, I gotta talk with Jeff, is, uh. I would like, you know, if those guys are interested as well, they could, you know, sit in on it as well, so they got some trouble in on that machine, so if he wanted to, they can actually use it up here around the center. I haven't talked to Jeff yet, I don't know if he can ferry his department, just, it's an option, if they want to, fine, if they don't, that's fine as well.
Um, what was I gonna say?
But there's plenty.
You know, maybe, maybe you could even offer for Ed to run that through the town here for Jeff and see if he's willing, you know, that could be another function you could do.
Right.
Run this.
You know, we didn't buy it to step on Jeff's toes, I didn't buy it to, you know, take over anything for him, but I figured, you know, we're all the same town, if he wants to use it, then I have no problem with it. The machine's registered now, we registered it, it took seventeen years to register, but it's registered now, so, I don't know, I mean, overall, thirteen years it's been registered, but it's registered now, so it is legal. You know, if he did wanna use it up here.
So, so it's an attachment on these kids' table?
So that the hours for trash pickup along our town roads, not the highways, I think it's too busy.
Yeah.
Town road's ten to three, that is pretty fast, I'm.
And I think that, you know, I don't know what your feeling is on it, but I think we should stay off from, um, and stick to the actual town roads, not like mansion road.
Um, that's.
Just like you said, right, those, you know, that's a side roads kinda thing, but I think we should stay off the, and obviously staying off seventy-seven, we're staying off thirteen, but, you know, the Windsor Road, the Star Lane, uh, Mansion Road.
Well, save those, save those to the end, if you get the rest of the roads done in town, you still have some.
Right, it, it's gonna be a long process, you know, you know, if you have any suggestions, you know, where some of the worst ones are at the Star Lane.
Okay, now, do you have the safety vest for?
I have safety vest, I have the.
And you got gloves?
We have gloves.
Rubber and regular?
I have leather dog park, leather gloves, I have, uh, the cop proof, I think they're number four or number five cop proof gloves.
Okay.
And then we have, uh, a rubber palm insulated, probably not getting that, cause they get sweaty.
And you got the bags.
I'll, can make a call tomorrow about getting the bags.
Okay. I mean, the bags are the easy thing, the hardware store, if you need to.
Right.
Yeah, but you get them free from.
Leo, you have something?
Yeah, you, you can, cause he may have a schedule of the roads to do, or he's just gonna say, well, clean hook.
Well, no, I think he's gonna make a schedule of, of just our town roads, not the state roads.
But I mean, you have to have some kind of a system on that.
Yeah, I'm thinking you're gonna make up a system, you start at one road and go to the other.
Right, you know, say, so say if I had sense, uh, Penny Hill is the food and rain steam, well, this is, you know, I need some input, cause I don't travel fast.
Can we?
You know, if, you know, if side of road gets bad, we'll stop at that point and we're gonna come, you know, I'm, I'm sure they're all bad, but I know, uh, residents do do pickups on some of the roads.
I'll tell you.
See it, but if we have a starting point.
I'll tell you about, come in with Lain, list the town roads, not the state roads, not the highways.
Right.
List them, and then just start at one end and come across, cause you're gonna have a couple of weeks to do this.
Yeah.
And finish your road, like if they start to the road and they get to mailbox such and such, you're gonna have to tell them where you stopped, mailbox such and such, so they start off there the next morning and finish that. And just do their standard hours and finish the roads up as they go.
Which would be really easy to do, but not easy to take a while.
Right. Great. Some roads you're gonna see a tunnel and some, some are very limited.
But to keep them in the same area, you know.
And after two weeks, we'll reevaluate how that's working, if they're fooling around or if they're, but start with the old truck, we have it there for now. Keep a new truck in, in the yard, I say, and we'll, we'll utilize that truck for a couple more weeks.
Now, speaking of, it'll probably sell them out, cause.
We've got one bin so far.
So we're gonna open those bins on our next meeting.
Yeah, well, have to let that individual know that it's gonna be delayed a week because you have to put a cutoff time for.
Yeah, we do, I think I've done like three weeks.
So the date will be April second.
Right.
All, what I'll do is, uh, on my paper up there, I'll just put Corona delay or something.
Yeah, I'll do the same, I'll do the same on the website.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of, uh, quick things, one, we have changed some of the things that we offering now down there, uh, cleaning wise. Not that we're not cleaning anyways, but, you know, like today, it took all the two hours to clean the office, bleach in and scrubbing floors and just, and we've changed, um, internal policy as far as. How we storing our equipment, you know, not in the office area, it's out in the open area, um, you know, if you're gonna put your gloves inside, it's, you know, you wash them with hot soapy water. And then you can store them in, cause technically it'd be gone then, and then it can dry inside, other than that, they have to be out, out in an open area, um, just some things like that. We changed, uh, our trash room pickup, I changed this, no, we, I changed it, we pick up one day a week, that's it. We do a one-shot deal, um, limits our exposure to anyone and their, you know, vice versa. We do the school, we do everybody, one shot, the school's on board with it, um, I have told him, hey, if you need a special for whatever reason, you know, let me know, but that's the way it is right, right now. And same thing, we're trying to limit our interaction coming into the town office, you know, wearing a pretty high risk down there, so we're trying to eliminate, you know, that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Woody, appreciate you coming in, and, um, we'll get back to feeling changes, but we have those. Uh, we have everything scheduled for you and Lain will write it up and you guys can communicate back and forth. If there's anything you need us to check on or approve or change, just let us know, some of the things we can do with a phone call, like consensus and.
Right.
Try to make sure to keep it working smoothly.
Should this, hypothetically, should there be some kind of federal reimbursement kind of thing? Is there a way that I should be tracking additional tonnages or, um, I'm really not gonna know, but I, I was obviously gonna see an increase, but.
FEMA does have some of that stuff from what I read, that it's gonna be allowed to us.
I would recommend that you track it.
So, if you track it, then maybe that additional cost we can put in for.
I will put in, um, if I can.
I didn't know if there's a, you know.
It may not get approved, but it, no, it doesn't hurt for.
All your cleaning supplies, protective wear.
Yeah.
In fortunate for us, we had installed.
Yes, but there was cost to it at one point.
Yeah.
It'd be a year or so, the whole kind of stuff. And just on the N ninety-five, I do have a, a contact with three M and I'm like, yeah, no. I went to someone directly and they're like, no, we can't get there. They have priority to the hospital. I'm like, all right, so I try to get something. I don't draw any could use on it.
Even the hospital can't, cause the feds are bidding the states to get the same medical, that same medical equipment. Even the gowns that people wear, they have to gown up. I know today I heard of an ex, uh, an experience where the person was taking care of a woman that had MRSA and they didn't give her a gown, cause they don't have enough, they don't have enough of them. And that's, that's a contagious thing. Very bad thing, you know, but that's what's, if you see the news, that's what's happening in, in, uh, New York. A couple of the states, they're complaining, cause they're getting outbid by the federal government, but they want the states to have the same equipment.
Right. Okay, we're gonna move on. This, we have a lot of signatures still to do. Thank you, Woody. Appreciate you coming in.
Always come over.
Okay, the next thing we have on the agenda under town business is we had a article pass at town meeting and we had to send a letter to the governor and, uh, on the resolution for fair redistricting of our areas within the town. And, um, so we're sending that to the governor with a couple of other people and we're signing them as selectmen. Sending a letter after the town meeting, showing a positive vote. And it's three of them there, Mike. There is nine change, okay. Then the last one, spell my name out.
Okay. I didn't, did it need to go there?
No, it's started with K A.
Oh.
That's what it called. It didn't change his file.
Okay.
Good thoughts.
That's not. So. That's what I say. He's jumping ahead of me. Uh, while signing those, uh, Karen, keep this moving a little bit. Um, we've got a letter in here from FEMA, um, showing some of the emergency disaster declaration information that we can use and, uh.
I'm gonna be sending out a memo to the departments, asking them to track anything that they feel they've, it's associated with this, uh, that way.
So, we can get, uh, compensated back. So, we'll keep that file. I'll keep it here for now.
My vacation.
That's not, that is not pressing, but as the town, um, budget was, um, passed, um, I went through and, um, applied with three percent, um, pay raise to all the employees and Gemary assists me in making sure that we comply with, um, the Department of Labor and have the employees sign off and recognize their rate of pay change. And this one here gets filed in their, um, personnel file, should we get audited.
So, what we're gonna do is these remaining pages here need to be signed. And what I'll ask is to get the selectmen and myself to come in during our own free time and sign the, it's all written out to three percent here. We just need to sign on each of these lines. Now, we need down here lower, after you can, even after these ones that are flagged, there are still some more that need to be signed, okay? And we get down here lower and some have been signed. I'll probably just sell them. You get them? Nope, they all need to be sold. So, we need to do each of these. I thought it was just the ones that were flagged, so I brought them into the meeting. And all of them need to be signed. I'm not sure what.
Yeah.
Some flags, so we're gonna put that as part of our homework.
Well, actually, we'll come in next week to the manifestor and sign those.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If you put it with, uh.
With the checks.
With the check, yeah.
Okay, so that's it. Other than the town business stuff that I have. And now, Lain, you said you wanna do a small.
A short, non-public. Yeah, on personnel.
So, I'm looking for motion, Mike.
I can make a motion to go non-public, bar, I say ninety-one, dash, open, paragraph three, going number two.